On behalf of the committee, I welcome everyone to this public hearing of the committee's inquiry into voluntary assisted dying. Today, we're here to be talking about issues that may be distressing as they relate to death and dying. We acknowledge that these discussions may bring up difficult emotions, and so if anyone feels upset or needs support, we encourage you to take a break. Support services are also available. Their details are listed on our website and have been circulated here at this hearing venue. We thank all the participants and observers in the room for engaging respectfully in this important conversation. I want to welcome to the table to give evidence to the table Dr John Zorbus. Thank you very much for coming before the committee. We appreciate you taking the time to speak with us again today on relatively short notice. I remind you, this is a formal hearing of the proceeding and the protection of parliamentary privilege and the obligation not to mislead. The committee applies. As this is a public hearing, it'll be webcast through the assembly's website, and transcript will also be made available for the use of the committee and may be put on the committee's website. If at any time during the hearing you're concerned that what you will say should not be made public, you can ask the committee to go into closed session, and we will be happy to take your evidence in private if there are matters that you'd like to speak to with greater clarity. Could you please state your name and the capacity in which you're appearing?
Dr John Zorbus, President of the Australian Medical Association of the Northern Territory.
Thank you, Dr Zorbus. And would you like to proceed to make an opening statement?
Yes, I will. I will refer the committee to the written submission that the AMA has tendered to the inquiry, which goes to speak to our main principles and recommendations, but also to answer the questions on notice that were presented to me at the first inquiry or first session. I might quickly just reiterate those principles and recommendations in brief before we go to questions. Four core principles that we've identified as crucial to a successful VAD legislative framework and program in the Northern Territory are firstly, the primacy of high-quality palliative care. Investment in VAD must never be at the expense of or compromise investment in high-quality palliative care in the territory. Nobody, no patient should ever feel compelled to explore VAD because they're unable to access timely, comprehensive, and culturally safe palliative care in the territory. Secondly, the provision of robust and defensible safeguards, and specifically, there are safeguards in all medical programs and procedures, but specifically for those who are particularly vulnerable, especially around the voluntary nature of VAD for both patients and practitioners, and the provision of legal protection for all practitioners acting lawfully within the provisions. Thirdly, the importance of workforce support, training, and resourcing. A safe and effective service can only be achieved, or is entirely dependent, rather, on a medical and healthcare workforce that's appropriately trained and resourced, with specific training around counselling, debriefing, capacity assessment, and very clear clinical guidelines about the operational nature of the framework, so that there is no area for misinterpretation. And lastly, a model tailored to the Northern Territory. Speaking at the last inquiry, we hope we made clear that a framework that's transposed from a model down south will not suit our needs, while there are elements that might be suitable for us, and we make reference to those in Queensland and Western Australia. Simply replicating a model from somewhere else will not serve us primarily because of our remoteness, our workforce limitations, and very specific cultural needs in the territory. So to our recommendations, we've attempted to summarize our recommendations into nine, and again, in brief. An act of that legislation, it's clear that there is community demand for it, and from the AMA's point of view, there is a principle of equity of access of healthcare. We are the last remaining jurisdiction without a framework. To fund palliative care, any funding for a VAD service must be accompanied by a separate, protected, and significantly increased funding stream for territory palliative care services. We know that when VAD services are established, we see approximately a 30% rise in demand for palliative care services in that jurisdiction, and thus we should expect an increase in demand for our palliative care service. Thirdly, adopt a centralized hub-and-spoke model, so there are a hybrid model that allows us to benefit from elements that can be streamlined and centralized, but recognize there are elements of remote face-to-face care that will only be delivered if we head out to where the demand is. Fourthly, establishing a regional access support scheme. This is simply a support scheme to fund the cost of travel and accommodation for patients. This is not dissimilar to services we already have in the territory, such as the Patient-Assisted Travel Scheme, and thus can probably be adopted with frameworks we already have. Fifth, advocate for federal telehealth reform. We've recognized that the criminal code prevents the use of telehealth for VAD services. This affects all jurisdictions, and thus we'll have peers in other jurisdictions to advocate for that change to the criminal code at a federal level. Six, implement a competency-based practitioner model, so eligibility should be based on a combination of experience, and also completion of mandatory NT-specific training. The assessment should also require obtaining and documenting confirmation of diagnosis and prognosis from a relevant medical specialist for the diagnosis that the patient is presenting to the VAD service with, so in terminal cancer, that would be an oncologist. Seven, reject mandatory psychiatric assessment. We were asked this question at the last inquiry and took that on notice. We do not believe that the legislation requires a mandatory psychiatric assessment. This is likely a holdover or inertia from the original rights of the Terminally Ill Act, is not a condition in other jurisdictions, and more importantly, we need to focus on capacity assessment rather than psychiatric diagnoses, which is a core skill of all clinicians, but in the case of VAD, I think, needs particular attention. Eight, mandate pre-implementation co-design. We have spoken to the importance of a culturally safe program, specifically focusing on our remote and indigenous communities, and partnerships required there over the 18-month period we've suggested for design and implementation. And lastly, the establishment of an independent review board, which is also part of the 2024 report, but also important to have independent oversight of the operation of the act, including mandatory reports on a quarterly or annual basis to the public on the performance of the VAD service.
Thank you very much, Dr Zorbus. You were extremely efficient in communicating information last time, as you have been this time. We broadly find those extremely helpful recommendations to help guide us. As with the first time you came and spoke to us, it's clear that the AMA in principle wants very much to support VAD services being available in the Northern Territory as a matter of good health practice and equity. Now, this committee has specific terms of reference, and it's not just our obligation to determine in principle support for VAD legislation, but also the practicalities of it, in the sense that we have been specifically tasked with evaluating different VAD models from around the country and NT-specific challenges to try and figure out a model that would work in the Northern Territory. So today, we're going to dig right into exactly what that might look like, because we have been in a chicken-and-end conundrum of not wanting to prescribe essentially a law that could not be brought into effect, but similarly lacking the guidance, if you like, from clinicians and the health service itself in terms of what might be feasible. So could you elaborate upon the summary and recommendations to give us an idea of a nuts-and-bolts version of what a VAD service might look like in the Northern Territory? We broadly, I can say on behalf of the committee, appreciate and understand and support these findings. We understand that there will be a need for extra help in palliative care and age care, and there are other deficiencies in our health system. How could we have a VAD service introduced alongside that that doesn't compromise those things and that doesn't cost the earth?
So specific to infrastructure, staffing, equipment, et cetera?
All of the above.
Yeah. So a VAD service, we're talking about a centralized service?
It could be, again, that's up to you to determine.
So that would be my statement, yeah. We think a centralized service in a hub-and-spoke arrangement is probably the only feasible setup. And the reason for that is a completely centralized service that requires travel to Darwin for absolutely everything will have significant costs overrun, and a completely, you know, remote and per-case delivery basis dedicated to the patient is also incredibly expensive. A hub-and-spoke model allows for an element of centralization around the stuff that should be centralized, i.e. the type of medication that's used, the guidelines as to how those medications should be used across the territory, so NT-wide clinical protocols, the governance of that system. But the actual delivery of the service, as we've referred to in our written submission, for those who are... We have said two hubs, so one in Darwin and one in Alice Springs, and that's based around our current health service, the five jurisdictions that we have with the two larger centers and the two larger delivery services being Alice Springs Hospital and Royal Darwin Hospital. The reason for that is ability to access clinicians and those peer networks for advice on prognosis. You know, you need to be co-located, not physically, but within that peer network and having access to your oncologists and palliative care physicians. But also pharmacy, it's expensive to fly medications around the territory, and it is also, there are also very specific laws in the Poisons Act around how those medications are handled. So there are some benefits into having some centralized aspect. Equally, it's incredibly difficult to be able to have these conversations outside of remote communities or where people feel safe, and we have, part of our health system relies on us flying practitioners and, you know, doctors, nurses, you know, everybody really, out to country, and talking to people in places where they are comfortable with their family, where they have the benefit of making that decision. Now, we're talking about, we estimate, and again, these are rough estimates, you know, up to 20 patients in the first year of service. We're not talking huge numbers, and so thus we see the first 12 months of operation really being more of a trial of the operations, and small enough numbers that we can be quite flexible and agile into where the hub ends and where the spokes start.
Dr Zorbus, for 20-odd patients, I'm concerned that we are going to end up recommending by way of a centralized service, something that costs an enormous amount of money and will potentially come at the cost of other aspects of the healthcare service. And that is the principle of equity that we are now trying to balance. As a general proposition, the committee has, you know, felt that there may be a need for a legislative solution on VAD. The public submission we've received from the Department of Health has given us some indicative figures by way of comparison with the ACT for any sort of centralized model, suggesting that at a minimum, a centralized model would require the centralized VAD registry service, the centralized VAD service for setup, the Care Navigator service, and the pharmacy setup service, in addition to the review board, the standalone governance. The cost for that, the cost window for that at the moment, which we'll dig into further with the Health Department in the next hours, is somewhere between $1 and $20 million. Now, at a time when we are asking questions about why we don't provide maternity services holistically, or why we don't have a standalone cardiology or pediatric service, how can we, as a matter of equity, justify for 20 or less people a $1 to $20 million service on VAD with a centralized model?
I can't speak to the estimates provided by NT Health, and therefore can't speak to the veracity of them. What I can say is that there is, it has to be weighed up against the opportunity cost.
Yep.
And if the opportunity cost of a, the alternates to a hybrid model are two non-hybrid models, which will easily cost more than any form of hybrid model. I think that much is clear, and that's been the experience across the other jurisdictions. So a hybrid model would be our cheapest option. As to what the total cost is, I can't, I can't really, you know, provide any support or refute what NT Health has provided in terms of figures.
Sure, I understand that. What does a model that looks like a community-based model look like to you in practicality? Let me pitch to you a scenario. We have 1,400-odd doctors in the Northern Territory. If we had standalone governance and focused on robust standalone governance in preference to standalone delivery, if you like, could we allow for those 1,400 providers to opt in and out of participating in VAD services, whether as a coordinating practitioner, a consulting practitioner, or an administrator?
So if they meet the eligibility criteria we've suggested, then yes.
Okay.
And so as long as the safeguards that we have placed importance on can be met, then yes, any practitioner who meets those eligibility criteria, has completed the mandatory training, is supported appropriately by the, you know, whatever workforce measures we have in place, would be able to participate in VAD.
And if that was the case, the governance of that, at the moment, the Chief Health Officer of the Northern Territory has statutory powers. Could the governance and the review board be situated within the Health Department, in your opinion, or would that need to be independently located as well? I'm asking as the representative of doctors.
Yes. There is an argument that because VAD is such a final decision, that independence is more important here than anywhere else in other areas of medicine that we practice. Now, that's also true of palliative care, and palliative care sits inside NT Health. VAD has, as I'm sure you've seen from the submissions you've received, there are moral and ethical arguments around the provision or the lack of provision of VAD services, and I'm not here to speak to those. What I will say is that, from an AMA point of view, a VAD service should be as independent as possible, and if that means it reports directly to the Chief Health Officer rather than the internal structures of NT Health, that is probably our preference. That is not an absolute recommendation, but that would be our preference.
I understand that, and again, these are very pointed questions, and I appreciate you giving us very honest answers. I reiterate that if there's anything that you want to speak about in camera, you can ask to do so at any point. I'm going to hand over to some of my colleagues now to give them an opportunity to ask a few more questions before I probably come back to you.
Could I add just one comment?
Absolutely.
Only expense figures that have been provided. I wonder if the central aspects have been overestimated?
Okay.
So when I, when we pitch a central and like a hub-and-spoke model, really the essential parts of the hub are a senior physician who has oversight of the governance of the program.
And that person is a medical clinician?
That is a medical clinician, and that is someone who is...
A palliative care physician?
Most likely experienced in palliative care, not mandatory. So what we find around the jurisdictions is the doctors who work in this space have a special interest in this area. Sometimes they are palliative care physicians, sometimes they are other clinicians with a diploma in palliative care, sometimes they are not palliative care physicians. But this is their passion and an area they are experts in, and that is where they dedicate their continuing professional development towards, and thus they are the best clinicians to run this service. You need that person to exist to make sure the clinical protocols make sense, that they meet the medical board's code of conduct, the provisions of medical care across Australia.
Yep.
Now, that's one person, and not necessarily a one full-time equivalent. You will also need, again, a central figure in the nursing space, whether that's a nurse or a nurse practitioner, and a pharmacist. We've also suggested that there is an Aboriginal healthcare practitioner or Aboriginal liaison officer, someone who can represent that cultural care aspect. That's one hand worth of people. It's not a lot, and I appreciate operationally, to your question about who can participate, we should absolutely leverage the resources we already have, the staff we already employ in NT Health around the NT. But the central aspect, I suspect, less focus needs to be on what is done at a strategic level within, say, Health House, and more on the actual operational nuts and bolts. I think there is probably, there are probably costs that can be saved there.
So let's just, I'm just going to follow up to that before I hand over. Those four people, as it were then, can those four people maintain credibility as a standalone centralized service partition from palliative care and the rest of the health system if their FTEs are split up?
They will require support from the health system in areas that are already synergistic across the health system. And what I mean by that is my IT services inside NT Health when I'm there as a practitioner are under the control of DCDD. They would need the same access to those other government services that provide multi-agency.
Administrative support aside, which I take your point, my concern is those four people you've identified, they're essentially a doctor, a nurse, an Aboriginal health practitioner, and a pharmacist, you mentioned. We're in short supply of all of those things, as you know better than anyone. If we were to have four standalone people like that as part of a VAD centralized team, would those four people be reasonably able to do other work, or would that contaminate the independence of having a standalone centralized partitioned service?
If we call it four FTE, it probably makes more sense. So we can have four full-time equivalent practitioners, that may end up being eight practitioners who work 0.5 across other services. If someone is in a central governance role, I don't think we could support them working inside the VAD service for less than 0.5. If you are, if you are a director of a service, you need to be present. It's not a 0.2 or a 0.3 type of job, whereas their clinical work could be split across services that look like fractions of 0.2, 0.3.
So the clinical work for those four people, could the clinical work for those four people be in areas like palliative care or age care?
Correct.
It could still do that, and you don't think that would compromise integrity or?
And I'll explain why. The, we already have a very thin workforce, and we have people who wear lots of hats inside this workforce. So myself is an example. I'm trained as an emergency physician. I'm also, I'm dual-trained. I'm trained as an intensive care specialist. I work across both those services currently inside NT Health. Now, the benefit to that is that a lot of my clinical support or administrative portfolios allow me to sort of serve two bodies at once, where the overlap is. So for critical care, in the emergency department and the intensive care unit, I'm able to speak to both. It also means I have the trust of my peers and my colleagues in that service as well. We've said that these services need to be separate, and what we mean by this is the public-facing side of the service and the infrastructure of the service. In the same way that Clinic 34, which is our clinic for sexually transmitted diseases, is branded separately, looks different, feels different, have different arms of communication, and is forward-facing to the patient in that way, gives them comfort in approaching it, thinking that it is separate to the emergency department, separate to the hospitals, separate to the other clinics and the other doctors I see. That's important. That is absolutely important, and the VAD service needs to follow those same principles. I think it would be unlikely to be able to stand up a service with practitioners who, A, don't work across other areas in NT Health because of the workforce challenges you've alluded to, but B, peer confidence in the service as well. So we need clinicians who have the trust of other clinicians inside NT Health, opinion leaders in our service who are respected, but also people here who understand the challenges of delivering healthcare in the Northern Territory. And you cannot understand that challenge without working inside the NT. So I see it as a benefit. I see it as entirely feasible. I don't think there is a conflict of interest per se, and I think it's unlikely that a patient will see someone with... There is potential overlap in seeing someone for a VAD appointment and then seeing that same practitioner for palliative care. Now, we could put a protocol in place or a guideline in place that would prevent that from occurring, and that's something we should consider. But the FTE can be split, and moreover, we would suggest that that overlap is actually helpful to the service rather than harmful.
Thank you, Dr Zorbus. That's very handy. I'm going to hand over to my colleague now.
Just had one question around the practicalities of implementing VAD, and especially around when you talked about the centralized services for potentially Darwin and Alice Springs. Like, we've heard many people, obviously we've been traveling out to remote communities. So how would you see, on a practicality level, say, someone from, say, Boralula, for an example, wanting to go down the line of VAD and take that option, but, you know, we've heard many people with palliative care wanting to go back to country and pass away, but if someone had the desire to administer a VAD on country, how would you see that in a practical sense?
So...
And then probably overlaying back to what my colleague was saying, the chair was saying, to ensuring that there's no overlap with doctors and nurses because of sensitivities
Yeah.
in communities.
Yeah. So somewhere like Boralula is a very hard place to reach with our current services, and it's not uncommon for people to have to fly back to Royal Darwin Hospital via Care Flight or via charter to receive whatever that service might be. VAD would be in that same bucket. So we're not talking about an order of magnitude change to expenditure, because we already do it today for people attending, say, a fracture clinic appointment or an oncology appointment or whatever it might be. We already have incredibly high centralization of our specialists. Now, where we have a high demand for a service in a particular area, we fly the specialist to them. And we see this especially in services like pediatric cardiology, where the cardiology team will fly to a community and will have an open list, essentially. We, you know, we try and make bookings, but if someone, if someone who needs to be seen rocks up to be seen, they'll be seen. We're flexible. So for somebody in Boralula, because currently it's impossible legislatively to use telehealth, they would have to be face-to-face consultations. That could either be the patient flying to, for Boralula, that's top end, so they would come to Darwin and go through our already existing PATS scheme to make an outpatient appointment with the VAD service wherever the VAD service might be located. Or the VAD practitioner flies to them if there is justification for flying the service to the community, i.e. a high number of people who are using it, or say, East Arnhem, if three potential VAD patients fly to Gove, and the practitioner goes to Gove to see them there, that's potentially an option as well. To answer your question about the delivery of the VAD, you know, death on country is absolutely a critically important part of culturally safe practice, so that would require the delivery of the medication and the practitioners who will deliver that medication to Boralula. That, you know, expense or structure, we're talking about a nurse plus minus a pharmacist flying to the community, again, not, not in, that different to what we already do with medical charters at the moment. Expensive, but it's an expense we already wear, so it's business as usual for the territory in our current operations. This is not a new expense. The workload will be a new expense, but the structure will not be.
Just a quick follow-up question around telehealth, because we went to a number of communities. Some had really good telehealth services, others didn't so much. So just, just to clarify, you're saying telehealth service probably wouldn't be a way of consultation around VAD generally, or just, yeah?
Yeah, the trouble with telehealth is that it is a, it is a significant resource multiplier. For a jurisdiction like the Territory, it is hugely helpful in terms of minimizing expense while still being able to deliver safe and quality care. I recognize that telehealth is not for everybody in every situation, and I think if a patient who was pursuing VAD did not want to pursue, and this is hypothetical because we can't do it at the moment anyway, wanted to pursue VAD but did not want to use telehealth and wanted to attend face-to-face, I don't think we could refuse that request for something as important as a decision to enter into VAD. In a, in a perfect world where telehealth was permitted, the suggestion we have made is that at least one of those two mandatory, one of those two mandatory appointments or assessments for VAD, at least one would be able to be done by telehealth. Why not both? We still think there is importance in face-to-face assessments associated around, you know, psychosocial elements of discussion that we have with people to ensure that voluntariness and capacity are there. It would be technically possible to be a completely telehealth service if the legislation permitted it. Our preference would be for at least one to face-face. I suspect most patients will prefer two face-to-face.
I've just got a follow-up question on the telehealth, just an overall, general, generic question. So in some instances where we've been remote, some of the health services have declined over time due to remoteness and staffing issues. I just want to confirm that the telehealth in the Northern Territory is actually getting better, more use, or are there still some limitations, or it's getting worse? So I just, I want to know if it's actually getting better, if we do try and go down that path and advocate for it.
So NT Health will be able to provide you with their position. I will say, from the doctor's perspective, and the feedback we get from our members is that it is deteriorating. Now, that may not necessarily just be infrastructure. In fact, it's usually training and workforce support.
Yep.
So someone's been in the community for two days, is not familiar or has not been trained with how to use the telehealth system. So the cameras might work, but if the people attached to them can't use them, then it's, you know... So the points of failure in telehealth have gotten higher and higher over time, and it's definitely more fragmented than it used to be. This will be more fragmented as we move to more NT Health clinics transitioning to archos rather than being NT Health-operated, and so we see more of a fragmented landscape being an issue. The AMA's position on IT in healthcare is that we have a fundamental problem with the structure of health IT in the Territory. And that is that almost all decision-making around health infrastructure, IT infrastructure, has transitioned to DCDD. And there is less and less advocacy and role for the specialists in NT Health, and by specialist, I mean frontline clinicians, doctors, nurses, allied health. I'm not just talking about doctors here. Are not able to inform the projects, are not able to direct the projects, and the priorities of NT Health are being outcompeted by the priorities of DCDD. This is not an insult to DCDD. This is just simply a reflection of what the fragment, of what this fragmentation has done to frontline care.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr Zorbus. Matthew Curl, member for Blaine. So just going back to that scenario you mentioned before, where, say, someone in Boralula would like to access VAD, and you're talking about a centralized service, so they're already, let's say if they have cancer, and it's a terminal cancer, so they're already traveling using PATS, the Patient Transport Scheme, to come in and see their specialized care. If we looked at a community model where any medical, any doctor or specialist could be accredited to or certified to engage in VAD and be their consulting practitioner, would they be able to, say, the, if the GP that they were normally dealing with and the specialist who they were dealing with as part of their illness, if they were willing to certify as VAD practitioners and assist the person, would they need to consult a centralized service, or would they be able to just use the practitioners that they're using to treat their illness?
Both. So, so, so what I mean by that is the operational side of things absolutely could be delivered by the local practitioners. If you have the doctor, the nurse, trained, competent, under that centralized framework, then that would be fine. Even the delivery of the medication at that point, it becomes cargo rather than moving a patient or a person, so that's significantly cheaper. However, the safeguards have to be centralized. So they would have to operate under centralized protocols that are designed under the governance of the centralized service. And I think this is potentially the difference in our position and NT Health's position, is we see the central aspect of this as being quite small. If we have no uptake in the communities on practitioners who are willing and trained to deliver a VAD service, then yes, it will rely heavily on that centralized service and be very expensive. If we do have uptake, and especially as we develop regional hubs, because it may be that you're in group and there's nobody in group, but there might be someone in Ngunnboy. But the safeguards, the protocols, the guideline that those practitioners access, the education they receive, the credentialing they undergo, that's the centralized aspect of the service. So we don't, we don't see a model, you know, the hybrid model allows for both.
That's excellent, actually. You nailed the answer to my question there. So on that one, do you see much overlap between the review board and the centralized oversight that you just talked about there?
The independence of the review board, I think, is a really important part of the openness and transparency that we're going to need for a service like this. Despite VAD being, you know, incredibly popular with the, with, you know, the people who have elected you, basically. There is still, there is still very strong opposition around moral and ethical grounds, and so anything we have to do has to be very open and very transparent. Everything we do should be, but in this case in particular, we really have to cross our Ts and dot our Is. And so I think the independence of that review board is paramount in that respect. And so I think the independence of that review board is paramount in that respect. I see the V A D services providing their reports and the review board as being the scrutiny and therefore they probably should be separate.
So, so the evidence of the AMA then that you're giving is centralized governance and oversight and then the separate review board. Now, if you would indulge me for a second, I just have some questions about your opinion on the makeup of the review board. So I've been doing some reading recently about the Child Death Review Committee, which I assume you're aware of. So that's appointed by the minister, but it has some recommendations about, you know, the makeup of the committee. And I was looking at that as a, as a template of what our review board might look like. Do you have any suggestions on recommendations for the, the kind of makeup that should be on the review board? Like key roles that should be there?
Our recommendations are high level, but in terms of key roles, senior medical practitioner with expertise in V A D, senior nursing practitioner with expertise in V A D, senior pharmacist with expertise in V A D, Aboriginal health, senior Aboriginal healthcare worker or representative of Aboriginal care, especially in the regions, and senior legal representative with expertise in V A D. That's very high level and I don't think I'd be able to give you a, more of a drill down. I don't know the, while I'm familiar with the Child Death Review Committee, I don't know the complete membership over the top.
Yeah, that's okay. And it's changed a bit. What, so we've discussed the F T requirements around the oversight and governance. And we've said that less than point five would probably not really work. But in terms of the review board, would you see that as being something that could be existing people who are brought together at regular intervals to review the material that's submitted to them rather than a full-time job?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, it would function similar to, let's say, the medical board where you have monthly board meetings. Now, there is a body of administrative work behind that that supports that. But ultimately it is a, a one day a month where the meeting takes place.
Dr Zorbas, you've been very thorough as always. We're deliberately going over time and we appreciate your extra time. I'm going to pitch three short questions to you to be able to answer as best you can. First of all, as a ratio of expenditure or infrastructure, how much extra palliative care investment do we require if we were to install a V A D service, one? Two, could we use practitioners in South Australia and Queensland as consulting physicians? Not as coordinating practitioners or administrating practitioners, but as consulting practitioners to be able to verify a diagnosis on a second stage? And thirdly, physical locations, we've learned place matters import significantly. We had submissions from places like the Alice Spring Hospital saying we don't want V A D services to be conducted on health premises because we don't want people to be scared from coming to our premises. Where would we conduct V A D services in terms of administration? Do we need a purpose facility?
Question one, the other jurisdictions and the experience suggests that we'd see roughly a 30% increase in demand on palliative care.
Thirty percent?
Thirty percent.
Okay.
Now, that is over, there's an exponential increase in the first three years. So while the first year is very easy to manage, it's the second and the third year where you see that huge increase in demand. I think it's fair to say 30% is huge.
Yeah.
I would, I would defer to direct liaison with the palliative healthcare physicians. But, you know, 30% effectively is the increase in demand and therefore I'd estimate the resourcing would be around the same.
Yep. On the second issue of whether we might be able to rely on expertise elsewhere for a consulting practitioner?
Yep, the answer is yes. So for prognosis and confirmation of diagnosis, any appropriately trained specialist who also met our eligibility criteria, I think would be suitable. However, it should be done in concert or at least have some element of peer discussion with a local specialist so that there is an understanding of what services can be delivered here and can't be delivered here. There are some high-level treatments that we don't have the infrastructure or skill set to deliver in the N T. And to make a final decision about that, I think you need to appreciate all the treatment options you have available to you. So, so yes, but there would have to be some peer discussion with our local oncologists.
As a footnote to that question, is it currently the practice that you, you consult with or gather the expertise of people in other jurisdictions to help with clinical matters in the Northern Territory? Are there any protocols for that? There are. And so we could extend similar protocols or we would need new protocols for that?
It'd be, it'd be easy to do because it is done at the discretion of the clinician. We don't need overriding, overriding overarching protocols necessarily. An example would be cardiothoracics. So we don't have cardiothoracic surgeons on a permanent basis in the Northern Territory. However, all of our clinicians are equipped to, to know when we need to consult for cardiothoracic, a cardiothoracic opinion. And we would do that on a case-by-case basis. So we already do that and there is no overarching need for a protocol. That would just fall under the code of conduct and current medical practice.
But there's no legislative prohibition working cross-jurisdictionally, even if it was in relation to V A D?
I would have to defer to a legal opinion on that.
I think we'd need to check that one as well. Yeah, I think there is a restriction there.
Whether that's a Commonwealth or a local jurisdiction, I'm not sure.
And the final one, physical location?
Separate from our health facilities. That has been consistently and strongly expressed by all members who've reached out to us. In terms of what that physical infrastructure looks like, it doesn't, it, it, it needs to be like any other N T Health outpatient clinic type of setup. So what would be suitable for a, for a healthcare facility at an outpatient level? And that means secure storage and transport of medications. So there would be some element of, you know, safe and lockup and security there. And the way administration is set up, the ability to, you know, access the health I T services, that kind of infrastructure. We're not talking about significant medical infrastructure like oxygen suction, you know, the required number of G P Os, sterile or clean areas, I think that would, you know, we don't have to go to that extent.
Drs Zorbas, we're running short of time. My colleague, Cat McNamara, the member for Nightcliff is online. I'm going to pass to her to ask a question.
Hey, thanks. Just a super quick question. I've noticed, Dr Zorbas, of your submission, the AMA and T submission, really thorough. The point about cultural safety and co-design, I was just wondering if there was an example you could point us towards or perhaps just briefly mention how, is there other areas of N T medicine, like programmes or that, that, that have been co-designed in a way that you think is appropriate, that you could sort of point us towards as a reference?
It's a small project, but it's a recent one, was the E D waiting room redesign project. So that was a local in, internal to the department restructure where doctors, nurses and the Aboriginal liaison offices and the Office of the Aboriginal Liaison Offices inside the Royal Darwin Hospital redesigned the waiting room and sought culturally appropriate artwork, templates, language, welcome videos to explain the process as you, as you make your way through the emergency department. It's a very, it's, it's hyper-local, but I suppose what it speaks to is that we already have frontline clinicians such as our Aboriginal healthcare practitioners and Aboriginal liaison officers who already have these connections in place. I, I think if we get too high level, we're, we're going to get disconnected from what really matters to our patients.
Thank you.
Dr Zorbas, in the interest of time, we're going to wrap up because we've got a short turnaround before we have our next witnesses come to speak with us. It is improbable that we will ask for further written information on the time scales that we are being compelled to work under at the moment. But we want to thank you for being so generous with your time on short notice and providing us very clear testimony to help us inform our discussions. And so thank you on behalf of the committee and we look forward to continuing the progress on V A D together.
I thank you for the chance to appear and thank you for listening to the voice of your doctors.
Thank you very much, Dr Zorbas. All right, we're, we're going to move straight on to the next set of witnesses without taking a break, I think. So if everybody wants to make themselves comfortable and just stretch their legs for two minutes while we transition. Yep, sure, quick bathroom break and then back on if we can. Just let you get settled and let me know.
Yeah, and just a reminder for everyone to press your buttons on your microphones.
Colleagues, we're all good to go? Yep. Cat, you're all good to go? Member for Nightcliff? I don't know, I defer to the. Yep. Okay, great. All right. On behalf of the committee, I welcome everybody to this public hearing of the committee's inquiry into voluntary assisted dying. Today, we'll be talking about issues that may be distressing as they relate to death and dying. We acknowledge that these discussions can bring up difficult emotions. So we always say to everybody, no matter who they are, if you feel upset or need support or want to take a break, please let us know and we'll be very happy to do so. We also have support services available both in writing and on our website and circulated at this hearing venue. And we thank everybody for taking the time, participants and observers, and for respectfully engaging in the important conversations that we're having. I'm welcoming, welcoming to the table to give evidence to the committee again, Dr Paul Burgess, the Acting Chief Health Officer, Dr Jeremy Chin, the Chief Medical Officer and Dr Kane Vella, Clinical Subject Matter Expert. I know we could add lots of extra titles to you, Dr Vella, which aren't listed here. Thank you for coming before the committee today. We appreciate you taking the time to speak to the committee and look forward to hearing from you. This is a formal proceeding of the committee and the protections of parliamentary privilege apply as does the obligation not to mislead the committee. This is a public hearing and being webcast through the Assembly's website. And the transcript will be made available for the use of the committee and may be put on the committee's website. If there is anything that you would rather not be made public in what you want to say, please let us know. And the committee will consider going to closed session to take your evidence in private. And I reiterate that point because we are looking to have a very frank conversation with you about how to make V A D work. And so if at any time you feel that you would like to speak with us in confidence, then we would be very open to having that conversation. Could you please state your names for the record and the capacity in which you're appearing for the audio?
Jeremy Chin, Chief Medical Officer, N T Health. Paul Burgess, now the Chief Health Officer for Northern Territory.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paul. Kane Vella, Clinical Subject Matter Expert, Department of Health.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, would all or any of you care to make an opening statement? No? We can dispense with that? All right, let's get straight to the good stuff. We have time, but we also have significant questions. I'll begin by, I guess, diving straight into the deep end. Our concern as a committee is not just to assess whether or not there is in principle support for voluntary assisted dying. As a matter of equity, we all believe, generally speaking, that there probably is in principle support. Our mandate and remit is also, and our directions by terms of reference, to interrogate models around the country and to look at how it might practically work in the Northern Territory and specific challenges for the Northern Territory. Now, we've identified a number of those as a committee. And what we want is to have a iterative discussion with you today about how to make this work. Noting that last time, you, you were all extremely helpful. Don't take it the wrong way, but we, we were in a little bit of a chicken and egg conundrum of you tell us what the lawyers and we'll tell you how to implement it. And I was saying, tell us what you can implement and then we'll try and make sure we don't, you know, we, we can suggest a law that is, is useful as opposed to prescribe something that may be unrealisable. The crux of the issue is this, by everyone's estimation, 20 or less people might access a V A D service based on statistical projections if we were to have a V A D service. We are, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in capacity deficit and debt in relation to staffing costs on health. There are questions in the community about primary healthcare, maternity, palliative care now we know, and age care as well, which we have seen in person, in the flesh as a committee. Your second submission to us in writing, which provides some numbers relevant to the A C T V A D implementation suggests that to go down the model of putting up a standalone service of some description might cost anywhere between a pretty wide bandwidth of one and $20 million. Now, I know that those figures that you provided are very high level and indicative of, not necessarily reflective of exactly what it would cost us to put a healthcare service in place. But to cite from what you said here, A C T had an initial budget forecast of $19.2 million allocated for the establishment of V A D and recurrent costs from 2024, 2025 into 2027, 2028. This covered the V A D registry setup, V A D service setup for policies, Care Navigator setup, pharmacy setup, V A D review board. Now, we would very much like to support a model that will provide equitable access but also realistic and prompt access for Territorians. And so today, that's what we'd like to dig in with you about. The 2024 report, we're starting to feel, may not have turned its mind to practicalities quite as much as we are being asked to turn our mind to practicalities. So let me pitch this to you and tell me how this might work. We're now increasingly thinking about standalone governance as a, as a priority rather than standalone delivery. If we were to use our network of 1,400 doctors across the Northern Territory, how might we have standalone governance to enable those 1,400 practitioners to opt in or out of being coordinating, consulting or administrating practitioners?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Member for Fonglin, for that opening statement. There's a lot in there. I think, just to go back to one of your early points about a possible caseload of 20, I think that would be people who probably complete the process with that, but there'll be many more. And we made that point in our submission to who consult the service and choose not to go down that pathway. But that still requires staff time and consultation and probably several visits to make decisions. So that's quite normal with any new service. In terms of our second written submission, I think what we're trying to assist the committee here with is to think about what needs to be done in the legislative drafting process. And I think it's setting up the, the authorizing environment for, and the governance. So authorizing environment for the safety use of medications and the training, credentialing of practitioners. But also importantly, an independent review board that can monitor the statistics of, of use of the V A D service and also over time, hopefully give guidance about improving the service with relevant input from consumers and practitioners. Your question around practitioners is a good one. And my experience interstate, having done bad training is often, clinicians who already have a role but see this as important to them personally as providing a service to their patients will often undertake the training, but it's not all they do. So we'll see this particularly within our general practitioners, many of whom don't work for N T Health, but they work as private businesses. But who see this as a duty of care to their community and their patients that they want to be in some ways coordinating or sometimes even participating, but that's up to personal choice of those practitioners. So that's quite common interstate where V A D's been implemented. So I think the number of clinicians might be slightly larger. Not all clinicians will want to do this training. Some will have their own personal beliefs and conscientious objections to be involved in this and that's well understood. So in terms of the, I think you were interested in the, in the money story. I think the, the key message is there'll be significant front-up costs in terms of establishing governance, training, regulatory environments and the safety and the guardrails. And that's, that's the same with any new service that gets stood up. But the ongoing and recurrent costs will be marginal compared to the, the setup costs. And in our written submission, the nineteen odd million from A C T was over the three to four-year period. And then the recurrent cost was $1.6 million per annum. It's clear with our current fiscal position, we're probably unable to absorb those costs. There's significant efforts now for budget repair and we hope that will be somewhat successful into the future. Irregardless, I think we, we are looking at, we are looking like a significant investment to establish those governance and centralized functions of pharmacy, product safety, training, credentialing in supervision of practitioners who participate.
Dr Vella, do you want to add to that before I dig further? Okay, so, sorry, I just briefly lost my train of thought. The president of the AMA, who has provided testimony to us twice now and in writing as well, I just asked him essentially as well, as a ratio of expenditure on infrastructure or otherwise, how much extra investment would we require in palliative care if we were to introduce a V A D service? And his estimation was a 30% markup. Now, we are clear as a committee from our time out in remote areas that there is a profound need for extra palliative care help and potentially age care help as well. That's not within our remit to necessarily legislate about, but it is within our remit to discuss within our report. In addition, if you like, to $20 million to set up a service in A C T plus $1.6 million recurrent, we know that every other jurisdiction has also had exponential rise, I think exponential is fair to say, in demand for palliative care services when you introduce a V A D service. What then does the real cost in money figures of putting a V A D service look like?
So from the perspective of palliative care, if we were talking about a 30% increase in running costs, that, that would be a substantial increase overall for budget funding for, for palliative care. At the moment, I think we went through that last time, some of the medical F T E available for top-end palliative care.
Yeah.
And Central Australia palliative care. We would foresee that that would need to be expanded to at least have additional specialist services and, and clinical nurse consultant capacity to be able to visit remote communities and to be able to provide education services to G Ps. It's often a hub and spoke model. It's often a hub-and-spoke model whereby the specialist service provides support to the primary healthcare clinics. We do know now that that is woefully insufficient at present and does need attention. And it has been an issue that, you know, from a personal perspective as well as, we're working in that area that we, you know, we do see an urgent need for that. However, there are always budgetary constraints and conflicting priorities, which mean that it is difficult often for everybody to be satisfied with what is only a finite slice of the pie available to fund these services. But certainly, we would expect, you would need additional clinical staffing, which, and travel-related costs, which would not be, you know, it would be quite an additional on-cost to NT Health. And that would be, you know, in the order of potentially, you know, $1 to $2.5 million if we were to fully service FTE in terms of specialists and nursing staff with those on-cost to the department as well as a travel budget.
Yeah, Doctors Chin, Burgess, and Vella, I just want to reiterate, we're not here as being counters, and we're not looking to frustrate the process in any form. And certainly, what the committee has found is great interest in the idea of a good death, however that might look like. And for people in Indigenous communities, to some extent, what we have learnt about is that people are interested in the idea of help and choice to finish up well, particularly on country. Now, there are significant costs imposed that we've just discussed here and that we're being quite transparent about. From the very beginning, we were very grateful for the fact that you came in here and said, we could only do this with a lot of extra money and a lot of extra people, or at least some extra money and some extra people to make it work. And we're trying to work out what version of that works best. And a community-based model where we utilise our existing web of providers and don't demand too much of the healthcare system centrally may be our most realistic way forward, notwithstanding that we would all love the Rolls-Royce of a standalone set of X number of FTE made up of doctors, nurses, pharmacists, cultural safety officers, to be able to provide a fully partitioned service, independent of palliative care and the healthcare system. So help me understand here what a workable model is in terms of FTE and providing a standalone service that has credibly separation from the rest of the system?
I think in our written submission, I think there are elements that are useful to be standalone. And particularly, I think a paper's been shared with the committee around a navigator service. We all understand the high turnover of clinicians and practitioners in the Northern Territory. And having a navigator service is really important to help patients who may not be able to navigate that system where there are lots of moving parts and changes in personnel and to get through and to coordinate with a central registry of qualified and trained providers who are assigned up to do that. So in terms of FTE, I think that, for me, would be an essential element of a VAD service, a navigation service, who can really help clients not waste time. Clients run well, their families are worried, and we do need to give them all the assistance to get through this process with as minimal bureaucratic obstruction as possible. And I think that's a core component. As referring to the other components of the model in the 2024 report, the assessment by medical practitioners, again, I think a realistic model. Certainly, my perspective as a GP who has an interest in palliative care and also interested in my patients having a good end-of-life journey, I would be very happy to be at least one of those coordinating practitioners. Not all would be. And so I think we would see, it'd be interesting to see what the uptake would be from our clinical staff already in existing clinical roles who have a sense of duty of care with their clients throughout the whole life journey, including end-of-life. However, it doesn't obviate the need that we absolutely need this navigation service and a centralized registry of providers so that we can minimise any time delays for sometimes patients who have critical issues and critical illnesses.
So again, Dr Vella, you brought up some salient points about Pats, travel. Dr Burgess, you pointed out that even if it's only 20 people who complete the VAD process, there may be, let's call it hundreds, others?
About 100 a year.
About 100 a year who may otherwise be making active inquiries in that space. The demands on Pats are already significant, and we've heard testimony to the effect of people wanting to finish up on country and sometimes not being able to make it back on time. Again, an extra layer of complexity that we're adding here. One way that we thought we may be able to work around that is when you're thinking about consulting practitioners, whether we may be able to use networks of providers in Queensland and South Australia to help us to be able to take some of the pressure off the system without incorporating all new FTE into our setup. How do you guys feel about that?
I guess from that perspective, it would need to think about what elements we would need to potentially outsource. If that was indeed medical practitioners, it would require them to perform, undergo the appropriate training under the NT legislation, which is what's required of each practitioner to their relevant state currently. So that would probably be a model that, when that was considered previously, there were some cultural concerns, given that we would potentially have practitioners coming from other jurisdictions without the, you know, understanding of remote Indigenous Northern Territory and the cultural aspects of care. So we felt that it would be important to have practitioners that are locally based or having had sufficient experience within the NT context to be part of a proposed panel of medical practitioners who could participate in VAD. So that wouldn't necessarily require ongoing FTE, but a sort of a panel whereby you'd be requested as one of a number of practitioners to potentially participate. So a process where that could be essentially managed through an existing medical officer's EBA so that those who wish to participate could come on as a sort of casual capacity to perform the roles required of VAD here locally, and then would be satisfied that they would have the relevant knowledge and experience of the local context. So that's one aspect from the medical practitioner side. I guess there's a couple of other aspects which Paul spoke to, which are essentially non-negotiable and essential to any VAD services. You've probably become aware of regarding the navigator service with nursing capacity and pharmacy services to ensure, you know, appropriate safeguards and dispensation, administration of medications.
So clearly, there are some aspects that we cannot outsource. Clearly, there are some aspects that we cannot rely on the private market, even in primary healthcare, to cover off in the Northern Territory. We're trying to work out how much the Health Department can do without overburdening it. One of the novel aspects of what we're dealing with in the Northern Territory is submissions that clearly say, if this is to happen, we don't want it to happen on Health Department premises. So, you know, we have submissions from the Alice Springs Hospital and from their palliative care team specifically making that claim, as have many, many others. So place becomes important as well. Are we adding to our list of costs, infrastructure costs for purpose buildings or facilities or clinics where we can provide VAD services, be they consultation, coordination, or for that matter, administration?
It would no doubt be an additional infrastructure cost. The extent to which that would, you know, impact budget wouldn't be insignificant. We wouldn't expect a sort of Rolls-Royce department in that respect. As the AMA spoke to, it would just be a standalone facility that would be away from the...
Health Department precinct, as it were.
That's right.
Yeah. So is there a version of this that can be done without us also investing in physical bricks and mortar infrastructure? Can you have a VAD service that only allows VAD to be administered in its final stages in people's homes or in a care facility that allows for it to happen?
Absolutely. And I guess it comes back to the sort of premise of VAD and promoting autonomy and choice and that being about an individual's, you know, capacity to choose the time and place, which has always been a central ethical aspect to our deliberations in 2024, at least with the expert panel. But I guess in terms of practicality, if that came to pass, that it wasn't possible due to budgetary constraints and, you know, practicalities of being able to manage VAD, then I guess that's something that's obviously a reasonable consideration that I guess you will have to deliberate upon.
So before I pass on to my colleagues, and Dr Burgess, I want to hear your thoughts on that as well. If we were to take that argument to its logical extreme, would we then be the first jurisdiction in Australia to allow VAD but not on health premises?
Look, I think, I just want to share an observation from being embedded in a health service that in a jurisdiction that did have VAD. And the first thing is to understand that 80% of patients who choose the VAD pathway also have palliative care concurrently. If you like, patients see going through the VAD process as having a plan B. If it gets very difficult in the palliative care and in stages of life, they do have another option. And up to a third of people who have both services actually will pass away from their illness without actually using the VAD substance. It'll sit there and be unused and be returned to the pharmacy service. So what I've also observed is that in some situations that patients, because of their terminal illness, sometimes end up in a service, in a palliative care service, and they have the VAD substance and have it administered in that service. But I understand some sensitivities from, you've expressed from Alice Springs, and when something's new, there is probably some reluctance to have some confusion of roles from the public's perspective about what a palliative care service is there for. But over time, I think there is inevitable integration as patients go on their care journeys and come in contact with their health system because of their symptoms at the end of life can be quite extreme and need hospital management. So if a patient's end of view of the world, you see, over time, there will be some integration, albeit at the moment, we are at the early stages juggling, I guess, sensitivities from the profession and clinical services about the appropriate setting.
So at a simplified level of that argument, I take the nuance in what you're saying, but at a simplified version of this argument, people don't want to own hospital. It's as simple as that, like, under the VAD thing is what we've been hearing over and over. So if we're trying to facilitate people being able to choose VAD, could we credibly do so by saying, you know, to the Territory, essentially to Territorians, that is a thing that you can have, but it's not part of the health service insofar as you would have it in a hospital? Dr Chin, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, thanks. And I'm also going to make reference to a number of the submissions in general.
Yeah.
And in particular, the very useful submission from the Alice Springs Heads of Department and others from palliative care. There is a very strong understanding from subject matter experts, clinicians on the ground, and a worry that VAD commencing in health services in the actual facilities may have some negative knock-on effects in terms of perceptions, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't discount for a moment that they're not real, they're significant concerns. Having said that, I think it's important to understand also that in other jurisdictions, as VAD is introduced, perceptions are unpacked, untangled, assumptions are unpacked and untangled, and the concepts of death and dying with increased health literacy and improved communication, understanding, changes. It becomes much more nuanced and much more complex. I think it's challenging from the outset to say that VAD will never happen in a particular type of facility, an NT health facility, et cetera, et cetera. I completely agree with the concept of co-production. And in a co-production approach, a particular health facility in conjunction with staff, clinicians, and the community would decide whether that would be appropriate for that particular community. So I wouldn't want to assume that any particular community, health service, or group of clinicians would never say VAD should not happen in our facility. It may be that some people think that it is appropriate in their community, and it may be that as VAD is introduced, increasing numbers will start to be able to have that conversation at a clinical level with consumers, at an executive level, and that may make it possible and appropriate. It would be difficult and challenging to see how a clinician would be put in a position where they would say, I feel comfortable providing VAD. The community feels comfortable having VAD. Our health service managers feel that it's appropriate to have VAD in this service, and yet there would be a prohibition to providing that patient-centred care. That's not to say a decision shouldn't be made, but there are different models for making those types of decisions about where VAD can happen.
So there's an inherent tension there, Dr Chin. A number of our submissions, so submission 179 that you're referring to from the Alice Springs Heads makes it explicit that they don't want this to be happening on their premises because they have, as you were all extremely aware, a lot of people think that going to hospital means you're going there to die as opposed to going to a healing centre. Now, we have a number of other submissions that are smaller, shorter, perhaps less rigorous, but every bit as important from everyday Territorians saying, I don't want this to happen because I'm worried that it will, you know, compromise the health system, compromise people seeking care, compromise, you know, that it's the thin end of the wedge, right? There's a lot of thin end of the wedge arguments here. So again, we've been asked to think about a VAD model and service that will provide not just equity but is appropriate for the Northern Territory. In the Northern Territory, given the amount of fear, mistrust, or, you know, whether founded or unfounded, that people have of the health system, would it not be prudent for us to suggest that if a VAD model goes ahead, that it's something that happens outside of hospital settings?
Look, I think the objective of legislation is to provide an authorizing and regulatory environment. And I think the legislation would be, in my view, would be ill-advised to dictate place and as strict dictates around model, because what we will see over time is it will evolve. And I think those are very operational questions. And the nuances do change over time as the community becomes more accepting. So for the legislation drafting, I think we just need to be thinking about leaving that or having a tight focus on the enabling environment, authorisation environment, patient and staff safety, medication safety, those issues. And I think the bare minimum, we've already articulated around a navigation service and a board, an independent board to oversee the operation of VAD. We will inevitably see evolving models of care as this rolls out. And it might be an operational matter to begin with, that, as I witnessed and tried to explain to you, where we have a preference for VAD at home or VAD on country due to patient preferences, benevolently there will be individuals who have more complicated journeys. And there becomes the nuance, but that's an operational matter, not necessarily a legislation drafting instruction.
No, that's a reasonable point to make. Dr Chin, sorry.
I'll just perhaps give you an example of how this could work out to be very, seem appropriate in principle, but at the end of the day, work out to be quite strange. If, for example, we decide collectively that VAD would not happen on NT health facilities, as an example, but there is a great need from a community, there are the appropriate clinicians, and a location is felt for those who felt it was inappropriate and not ideal to take the substance at home, then there could be awkward situations where structures are set up to lease, for example, a house or a location where it would be appropriate. At the end of the day, it comes out to the same wash. The money's coming from the same bigger bucket, and the clinicians providing the service are the same clinicians providing the service. The consumer is still the same consumer and patient. And so I worry and that in this particular scenario where we start creating blanket rules, that the workarounds will be found and will end up in a very, very similar position anyway in the medium to long term as perceptions, community consultation, co-production, and then health literacy about VAD and its actual place in our community becomes much broader.
Yeah, I take on board your concerns. And I think the key point to make here is that this committee is being tasked with testing the Curly questions, and that's why we are. And with no disrespect to any of the bodies of work that have been done previously, they have been largely about garnering in principle support, support on the basis of principles of equity, thinking about high-level stuff. But again, now, we as legislators, five of the legislators of the Legislative Assembly, have to turn our minds to laws that will be possible and realisable and implementable. And so whilst we are obviously not medical practitioners and not in a position to dictate, you know, hard and fast things that will frustrate the process, we at least are trying to test those arguments with you. So thank you very much for your candour as well in stating your position. I'm going to stop hogging the microphone and hand over to some of my colleagues. I have plenty more things to... You okay? Matt, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Member for Blaine.
Hello and welcome again. Thank you for making time for us. I appreciate you coming in. So Matthew Curl, member for Blaine. In your submission, I'm going to the review board here, which is the oversight body. You referred to chapter six of the expert report from last year. But when I look at chapter six, it talks about makeup in other states, but it's largely silent on how the board should be constituted. So in this place at this time, do you have any specific recommendations on how the review board should be constituted? What specific skills, abilities, statutory roles should be there, given the existing statutory roles and the people that are already in the Health Department overseeing our medical system?
Yeah. So I guess with respect to that, it was our view that that would be an independent body. So completely separate to NT Health in terms of what it would look like, potentially a statutory authority whereby there's a, where that independent body holds a responsibility to reviewing the practices and the, I guess, maintaining the appropriate compliance with legislation. It would really be one that we foresaw at the time, and I guess it potentially was silent on how that might sit with NT Health, but certainly as a separate body. And the roles and responsibilities, essentially similar to other areas, would be made up of a legal member, medical practitioners, community members, appropriate cultural support involved in that as well, which would review the ongoing practices of the VAD.
So you're saying fully independent, but we need to have, like, we would need to have medical, so medical practitioners on there with experience in VAD. So are you envisaging there would need to be someone from outside the NT? Because most people with relevant experience would be working for NT Health, wouldn't they?
Not particularly, I guess, when each of those statutory boards were established in other jurisdictions. There'd been no previous experience directly with VAD itself. It comes down to subject matter experts within those areas, whether that's a psychiatrist, a palliative care physician, an intensivist, or any other relevant interested specialist in terms of medical practitioner, often, then maybe an oncologist. So around, if you review some of the makeup of those boards around Australia, there's a wide variety of medical practitioners who are consultant experts in relevant fields.
All right. Oh, sorry, Jeremy. Yep.
Thanks. I think this is a really important question about the independence. So the independence is about the composition of the board itself and its reporting line. So a good example is within NT Health, we would have a clinical governance committee. The clinical governance committee would report to the Health Leadership Board. So it wouldn't be appropriate, for example, to call a VAD review board independent and yet have it report to the clinical governance committees, like a number of other review approaches and committees. So line of reporting is important. The second thing is about composition. And I think the independence and the robustness of the process is always intention in the NT. It's a small jurisdiction and we privilege the information provided by people on the ground with knowledge about the communities, like the ones you've visited. It would seem to me in the best interest of a review board to have access to that specialist knowledge. And so in the NT, appropriate conflicts of interest registers, appropriate ways to manage that may be one of the approaches to have NT-based clinicians or NT-based potential future consumer, things like that, on the board or providing that in-depth knowledge so that the review board can make those nuanced and complex decisions. Otherwise, if we said that it would be independent in the sense that everybody would flee from another jurisdiction, for example, or not practising VAD, we lose that richness and nuance, which ultimately the review board is there to understand in depth.
So I have a follow-up question. So I assume you're all aware of the Child Death Review Board? Yep, okay. So I just want to draw a parallel between the two bodies that we're talking about here. So in VAD, we're talking about voluntary assisted dying where someone who has a terminal illness is suffering intolerably, seeks to relieve their suffering by hastening their end. And the Child Death Review Board, my understanding, deals with like the loss of life, so neonatal and child death. And so in that case, we're dealing with someone at the beginning of life who have their whole life ahead of them. And there could be, you know, potentially systemic problems, medical malpractice, anything, right? Systemic issues that could result in the death of children or the death of babies during various stages of pregnancy, childbirth, newborn. Would you, are you suggesting that the VAD review board should have a higher level of independence than the Child Death Review Board? And if that's necessary, can you dig in on why we need that high level of independence when it's, we're dealing with, you know, people who are suffering and near the end of life?
Thank you, Member for Blaine. I think, I mean, you're right to draw that analogy. But also I think you've also alluded to some of the differences where we have not just a child death review board. Actually, in standard practice in our health system is to review all deaths and care. Sometime that's in conjunction with the coroner. So we're very proactively looking for any opportunities to identify either errors or extraneous circumstances that have contributed to those outcomes. And you're right, I think the, in the case of VAD, it is different because it's less likely that we will be concerned about that. I think that if we can reflect on the functions of a board and what the matters they're likely to deal with, it will be complaints, and that might be complaints about time or process, and it might be also appeals. So people who have been here eleven months and not twelve months, but have a short time to live in the Northern Territory and want to become eligible for VAD and have a strong connection with the territory. Those would be the functions of the board, really. And then the other function really is to have a quality assurance or quality control, be sure that the parameters under the legislation with medication safety and practices being accredited and regulated. Oversight of those matters will be critical for the board as well, as well as monitoring caseload over time. So slightly different functions, I think, in this case. But and with that view, the reporting line for the board, I think, a consideration could be given if that's directly to the minister, a relevant minister who's overseeing that board and where that should be best placed, and that I'm sure that's a conversation amongst your legislative colleagues.
Picking up on that comment and the Member for Blaine's comment, Dr Chin, I'm asking specifically, would it be appropriate for the VAD review board to be chaired and run under the Office of the Chief Health Officer? I'm asking you, Dr Chin, specifically.
That brings a level of independence within NT Health in its current form and with the current committee compositions. The chief medical officer in NT Health is a chair of the Clinical Governance Committee. And within those streams of patient safety, so if we wanted to create a separate process with a level of separation, then nesting that under the CHO provides that level of separation. The CHO is also already in existence from a statutory perspective, which provides that level of structure.
Yep, yep. So the short answer is yes, that would work, potentially?
The nesting the service or the board or both?
Again, we're trying to reduce duplication or creation of new services if we have existing ones that might be fit for purpose within the context of the overall demand and the fiscal considerations as well. So this is not a bean-counting exercise for me, but given that the CHO already has statutory powers, you know, could the VAD review board essentially be operated on the auspices of the CHO without compromising any of the other principles that we're interested in here?
Yes, it could.
I'll come to you, Dr Burgess. I appreciate, I mean, it's not a question of conflict of interest. I'm asking because on lines of reporting, you've been very clear about your position. And as the chief medical officer, I think you have, you know, a right to express a position on that.
It does. I don't particularly know how Paul or the chief health officer has previously done that. Because obviously, but from my perspective, ye- yes, it could.
Dr Burgess?
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. Look, I think a survey of other jurisdictions, it has been truly independent. And of course, the Northern Territory reserves the right to chart their own course. I think the pros and cons, the pros would be that there always needs to be a CHO under Northern Territory legislation. And so that's a statutory role that must be always filled. So there is a certainty of continuity of that role being existent. I think the CHO, it's possible to have that as an oversight. But I think, and perhaps must be some instructions there about the position of the CHO being perhaps an independent chair or something like that, that would give the comfort to the board that they had the ability to make their decision on the board's composition and the board's merits. I think that needs to be, that's the true concept here, is that the board is empowered to have that independence and doesn't have necessarily a CHO overriding their decisions necessarily.
Let's try the flip side of that argument then. If you make it a truly independent, standalone from NT Health governance setup, is it reasonable and feasible for the chair of that board to be a non-medical practitioner?
I think so. I think the composition of boards interstate, they have legal consumers. And then all the territory context of First Nations representative would be highly desirable as well. And I don't see a need for a chair of such a board to be a medical person. I think that's a relevant skill set to have on that board, particularly if there's non-medical people present. But I'm very used to being in organisational governance situations in medical organisations with a chair, for examples, of the consumer rep.
Yeah, I mean, it just broadens the pool of people potentially in a place with a shallow pool that potentially could run an independent set of oversight is what we're suggesting.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed.
Notwithstanding that they would require statutory powers. Yes, Dr Chin?
I think if we're looking to other examples or exemplars, human research ethics is perhaps something worth exploring. All the research that happens on human subjects in NT Health facilities or by NT Health employees is, goes through the Human Research Ethics Committee. And that is a particular committee that's constituted of a number of individuals from pre-prescribed areas. And the gravity of what can go wrong and the level of harm that can occur if those processes within the Human Research Ethics Committee are adhered to is very significant in terms of drug trials, experimental therics, et cetera, et cetera. And yet that is significantly and safely nested within NT Health with the appropriate set of checks and balances. And it has a level of independence. And you're absolutely right to point out that when it's nested with NT Health, it can only be afforded a certain degree of independence.
I'm going, sorry, Dr Vella, yep?
If I may, with respect to the independence, one of the considerations around that in terms of the CHO, in terms of other practitioners, was independence was really at the forefront so that we could mitigate the issue of conscientious objection. So within, say, a setup within Department of Health, we wouldn't have to involve any staff, clinical, administrative to VAD processes, acknowledging that there's such a wide range of views on VAD and protecting those sensitivities. So it was part of the consideration for that was, let's consider an independent body so that we can ensure that it's a safe environment for all staff.
We don't want to overly prescribe legislative parameters and constrain ourselves or tangle ourselves in knots. But we're also mindful that if we just kick the can down the road on all operational implementation considerations, there is a danger that no Territorian will see a VAD anytime soon if they want to access the service. So that's the overriding principle here. But I take on board your point. I'm going to pass to my colleague, the Member for Nightcliff, who's online. Member for Nightcliff, can you hear us? Yep, there we go. She's behind you.
Sorry, everyone. Thank you very much. I'm just, it's a shift in topic, if that's okay.
Absolutely, yep.
It's, I just wanted to ask around cultural safeguards. And I just wanted to get a sense of how currently translators and the use of translators within the medical services, how feasible at all, like if someone was to recommend to us, you need to have a translator there for every conversation that involved VAD. How does that happen currently within the services and how accessible are translators?
So we, obviously, Northern Territory is an incredibly rich, diverse and multicultural place. And people from all corners of the world. So we do have phone translation services for many, many cultures available. And they are trained and registered. We also have an Aboriginal interpreter service that we run as well. I'm less involved in the running of a hospital system. So I think it is, it's certainly the intent to have that available when requested. However, I am aware in the past there have been some gaps in terms of availability for translators at some times.
Does that answer satisfy you?
Yeah, sure, sure. I'm just wanting to just sort of get a better idea around just some more of the cultural safeguards that perhaps things that we might have missed or things that we might need to still be taking into consideration that perhaps anyone could share, but...
Sure, I can add some more detail. Our, in, within Northern Territory Health, our Aboriginal Health Engagement and Workforce Division have developed a cultural safety plan. And they're in the process of reviewing and refreshing that and looking for implementation and also a quality assurance process as well to shore up the cultural safety, particularly for First Nations having contact with our NT Health system. So that's an active area of management, if you like, within NT Health and a high priority for our Aboriginal Health Engagement and Workforce Division.
Okay. In the previous submission that we had from the AMA NT, they spoke about it being, they stressed the importance of a co-design model. Are you able to share any other examples or ways that you do co-designing with other programs or services?
I thank you for the Member for Nightcliff. I draw on my experience as a remote general practitioner in Arnhem Land and in the Daly region for some time. And we work with Aboriginal staff on a daily basis and are in constant communication with our Aboriginal colleagues about how we can do things better and take advice, local advice. And we make all efforts to provide services in a way that is impactful but also effective from a cultural safety point of view.
Okay, thanks. I was just wondering if, because if we've been specifically asked as, you know, one of the things to look at, making sure that something like this VAD was co-designed, if there are any specific examples you could point us towards around maybe other services that have been co-designed?
The, yes, so in, and I'll talk in an area that's closer to my subject matter expertise is in maternity and birthing. In Gulliwinku, the groups there are very, very strong and have a long tradition of safe maternity care, culturally safe maternity care. And that in partnership with Charles Darwin University and the Mollywata Guga Centre there have published a co-production model under the RISE framework, which is a maturity framework based on four domains that steps through what co-production and culturally safe governance looks like at the highest level. So that's been published and referred to in a number of journal articles.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to pass to the Member for Daly.
Thank you, Member for Daly. I just had a question, and I asked the same question to the AMA as well. And it was just around the practicalities of administering the VAD medication. So the AMA talked about potentially having a centralised service, whether that sits in Darwin and Alice Springs or either all. But then the practicalities of, you know, looking at someone that lives remote, say, Baralula, for example, wants to have access to VAD, but then wanting to access VAD and pass on country. So how would you see that looking in a practicality sense from consultations through those steps to then administrating the VAD medication? And that's also in a culturally safe way of doing it and also noting that, um, you know, would you le- use local doctors, practitioners, nurses to do those consultations, say in Boralula? Or would you see that, um, as a sensitivity or, or a, yeah? Or would it have?
Talk to that a little if you want to go first.
Yeah, um, I g- I guess to, coming to your question, it does depend on the, on the nature of, uh, choice from, from the participant, whether or not they seek out a practitioner administration versus self-administration, which would, um, each one of those processes, it requires entirely different, um, set of, uh, responses to your question. But for example, for a practitioner-based administration, that, that would require a, a relevant medical practitioner or, and clinical nurse consultant to, to travel to the relevant community, uh, wi- with the medication, uh, in hand to be able to administer that at a, at a time of the patient's choosing. Whereas with the self-administration method, uh, the medication can be provided to that person and, uh, they have an assigned responsible person who assists with ensuring medication is safeguarded. Uh, and in that context, again, it, it can be taken at a time and place of their choosing, but the, wh- what we have in that context is there's, there's medication that is within a community, uh, and there are potential issues with, I guess, um, en- ensuring that, that it's, that it's monitored and is safe at all times. And what we have seen from previous, um, previous discussions with communities is the clinic wouldn't, wouldn't be keen to take responsibility for safeguarding that and, and it may, may, may cause them difficulty in terms of the practicality for, for administration for self-administration.
Just, just, uh, the follow-up with the self-administration and around, um, a responsible person. So would that responsible person potentially, uh, like the, could it be a family member? Um, or someone completely independent that has no association with the family or how, how would that look?
That's right, and it would need to be nominated by.
Okay, so nominated, yep. Okay, thank you.
Member for Blaine?
Thank you. Uh, so I've got some questions about, uh, withdrawal from care. So when we were travelling out in communities, um, we heard a lot of evidence that the, the people we were talking to probably weren't too interested in using VAD themselves, but there was a lot of discussion about, um, finishing up well on country. And a key, uh, theme that emerged from that was the ability to withdraw from care. And we heard, uh, differing testimony depending on the community, um, about how effectively that was able to be done and, and how much people wanted to engage with it. So, uh, there was one community where, uh, people were commenting that, you know, sometimes people, um, you know, they died either in the hospital, um, like the, the regional hospital or they died like travelling back to community. Uh, and there was a lot of expression about the importance of, you know, uh, at end of life, having enough time to be able to come home and, you know, go back to the place, like a suitable place, not the ho- not the clinic, uh, like their house or somewhere that they appreciated. And, and then all the family and friends and community members come around and, and, um, and say goodbye. And then when they pass, there's, there's a number of cultural things that have to happen. Um, we talked to the palliative care team in Alice Springs Hospital about this withdrawal from treatment idea and it, they made a comment that, um, it would be something of a cultural shift. Now, uh, this is different, so voluntary assisted dying in the Western sense is taking a substance to hasten death, so it's a positive act. Whereas what we discovered was there's actually, uh, it's, it's happening right now, um, but there are some barriers in the way of, of the negative act of withdrawing from treatment. So if you're in-stage renal and the dialysis isn't really working or, you know, in-stage cancer and the pain, uh, you know, you're, you're coming to end of life. Um, what kind of barriers are there now or ca- can you, um, comment on, uh, withdrawal from care and facilitating so that we heard, where were we? Was it Papunya? No.
They all were together, I honestly can't remember.
No, no, there was, there was, oh, sorry, we were in Tenet Creek and we heard evidence that, um, they do, um, return to country day trips. Uh, and so there's already, uh, there already seem to be programmes where people are taken home, you know, while they're in treatment, uh, obviously day trips back to country, you know, with the intent of returning to hospital for care. Um, is there anything, are there any programmes right now that facilitate people withdrawing from treatment and returning home in the knowledge that they would finish up and potentially withdrawing from treatment?
Um, thank you for, Member Blaine, I'd just to call on my experience in Manangrida where I've managed, um, several patients in that scenario and, um, people with terminal illnesses, even in-stage renal failure, do get tired of, of treatment and sometimes elect to withdraw from care and in that scenario, um, uh, the usual model is that we are working in a shared care model with our palliative care colleagues and we are working out an end-of-life palliative care plan that can be implemented safely in a community setting. And sometimes that involves us, there's a few technical aspects to it, probably beyond this, um, committee's interests, but certainly easing symptoms and, um, providing, uh, the patient the choice, uh, to finish up in country is incredibly important, um, and can be a very powerful moment in, um, inter- intergenerational culture, cultural experience. And, um, that's been some of the most rewarding experiences as a remote GP facilitating that joyce, um, choice for some of the clients I've had the privilege of caring for. Um, so we have that already as a pathway and, um, I think it's well understood and, um, in remote primary healthcare settings, we're very respectful of, um, patient choice for that. Um, VAD is an interesting option now and, and I'm sure what I've just described is we don't want to see necessary VAD replacing that. Um, and also this is part of the reason why we do need to have increased palliative care services. Demographically, we have the fastest aging population in the country. People do have multiple conditions as they age and multiple symptoms. Um, so we will see, um, the need for palliative care also increase. And we don't want this to be seen as a, VAD as a substitute for good end-of-life care at all.
It was very clear that they're, they're very different pathways. Um, yeah. So there's no, so you don't see any particular barriers, no legislative barriers, no? Uh, would there need to be any cultural reform? I'm, I'm trying to think.
From our, from our perspective in palliative care, it's not an un- uncommon scenario. Frequently we're repatriating people back to country for end-of-life. Uh, one of the challenges we do come up with is being able to efficiently repatriate patients. So it is often dependent on the, uh, the, the air services available to be able to do that as, as hastily as possible. Uh, so that, that is one, one of the challenges we often have, uh, and, and as a substitute, people will come and, and sit in the hospice in the hope that we can often get them back to country. And I know that's, uh, we're, we're probably more effective at, at delivering that for, for our ru- ru- rural and remote, uh, patients in the top end as opposed to Central Australia where there's, there's less air traffic, being able to take people to and from communities of a day where we have a pretty busy airspace here on the top end, uh, transferring patients.
I might just sharpen the focus of my colleague's question. Do clinicians require any greater protections in law regarding the withdrawal of care and liability?
No.
Okay. Um, and regarding patient choice, again, we've heard a mixed bag of testimony where some people are like, we worked very well with the health department to be able to, or the clinical providers rather, to be able to come back onto country at a time of our choosing. Sometimes it was a case of there were barriers, communication barriers, authorisation barriers and or just logistical barriers, lack of planes, as you said, whatever it might be, to get back and people end up passing away, uh, in hospital rather than being able to come back on country. Um, is, are there any other barriers in relation to people being able to exercise free choice? I'm particularly interested in, for example, whether the Mental Health Act is, uh, the tool that we have to be able to compel people to be able to stay or go? Is there any interaction in that space? No, not to you, not to you. No?
No, certainly not.
Dr Burgess? You're looking a little bit.
Well, I, I think, uh, um, clearly in the VAD legislation, um, um, having a mental health illness is an ex- exclusion. You need to be able to have decision-making capacity and not be suffering a, an illness that's treatable that, you know.
Well, no, to be clear in the other legislations, it's not a, uh, they're not mutually exclusive. Like you can't, VAD is not accessible to people who are suffering only a mental health condition, but for people who have a terminal diagnosis but also have a mental health condition.
Okay, I understand.
It's not prohibitive.
No, I understand your question now. No, it's not. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dr Chin.
Just very quickly, the, the concepts of, uh, an informed free choice undertaken, um, by someone with the capacity capabilities to undertake a course of treatment, to not undertake a course of treatment or whilst they're undertaking a course of treatment to withdraw from that are the same principles.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's good to have on the record. Absolutely, sure, go ahead.
So, last question on this, on this line. Um, so we're turning in, in bad, like in the report and in our contemplations, we're turning our minds to, uh, how the topic may be broached with the patient of VAD. Um, is there, can you comment on discussions with, say, patients who are approaching end-of-life? Um, the option, like is, uh, the option to re- to withdraw from care? Um, you know, knowing that would hasten death but provide more, um, certainty in terms of being able to finish in the way that they would choose? Uh, can you comment on how that is discussed with patients?
Uh, a general practitioner conversation I have frequently with my clients in outlining that there are a range of options ahead of them. I think the, the difference now with VAD being introduced as an additional option is the clear need for, um, clinicians to have done some training about, um, having to present the full range of options, not just one, um, to, to clients. But that is a very standard conversation currently happening in, um, remote general practice. Yep.
I need to, for the sake of the record, just get this there. Notwithstanding that service models will evolve, as you indicate in your written submission, as we've discussed today, what we're looking at if we have core centralised service in terms of, um, practical impost in terms of time and resources is, uh, something in the order of an increase in palliative care that the AMA today suggested would be a 30% palliative care potential, uh, cost impost extra that we require, plus potentially extra help in aged care, which we haven't discussed in great detail, noting that we have seen deficits in aged care facilities elsewhere. Plus the potential for buildings, physical location to be able to provide VAD services standalone, albeit not building a new hospital, um, plus at least some FTE being a number between the conversations we've had now, four and let's call it 10 people, but less than 10, right? Um, is that fair to say that those are the costs and resource imposts we're looking at to introduce a VAD service in the Northern Territory in the future, notwithstanding that service models may vary?
Hey, thanks. I think that's not unreasonable. Um, I think the, the missing component we haven't really touched on in that list is the review board.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot that one on that list too.
And, and the pharmacy service, um, which might be part of your FTA and, uh,
Yep.
Uh, the pharmacy service would be logically centralised within our hospital.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the last line of my little scribbles there, which was plus navigator service, plus pharmacy service, plus review board. Dr Chin? Did you want to comment on that? Dr Vella, sorry?
Apologies. There was also an, an IT budget component, which from the ACT perspective was approximately $4 million. So that, that would require consideration.
And can you just flush that out? I'm not even clear what that part of it is. Is that just providing centralised administration IT services or?
That's right.
Okay.
For the, for the, the process, for the, uh, administering and.
That would be for the, um.
Practitioner.
Cause I assume there'd be an online component, like I think in ACT they had an online component for tracking the, uh, the submissions. Plus you'd have to have like a website that would educate people and that, that would have been built bespoke. So that four million would have covered that cost.
And I think importantly, what we have in, you know, in recent months, we've, we've developed pretty good relationships with, with our interstate counterparts in, in VAD, particularly in South Australia and ACT. We have some good contacts, uh, who would, obviously there's significant information sharing and, uh, that, that would potentially mi- mitigate some of the, some of the initial costs regarding setup, which, which.
So when, in sum, we are looking at, I'm not going to do the number because it, it just becomes, the number will become the headline, but the number is significantly larger than $1 million a year, which is the kind of numbers that were loosely bandied about at the genesis of these conversations for us.
I, I think we, we hollowed ACT 1.6 mil per year in terms of operational, but the substantial, um, 19 to 20 million dollar cost over the four-year setup period. Um, and I think Kane's absolutely right. I think the, the benefits of, um, being the last jurisdiction, um, we have the benefit maybe to, um, piggyback off developments that have occurred in other jurisdictions and.
So w- we procure a licence for $4 million of IT is one thing, but just about everything else isn't transferable.
That's right.
Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair to say.
Everything else requires doing bespoke for the Northern Territory, noting bespoke Northern Territory conditions and concerns, including the tyranny of distance, massive travel costs, um, patient consultation costs to do things face-to-face, unless and until carriage service conditions change with telehealth.
Correct.
Okay, well, we appreciate your candour in, in spelling all of that out. We have, um, a small amount of time left. I still have a small amount of questions. But in the interest of being fair, I did say this would be an iterative process. I'm inviting the three of you to ask the panel any questions that you may have, that you may want to see clarification on as we go into the last phase of our deliberations.
Hmm.
Yeah, I guess what, probably one thing that's come up from today in terms of, uh, discussion around a model that, um, would be delivered, uh, i- in the home or at, at a person's choosing outside of a health, uh, Department of Health precinct, uh, I think we'd need to consider some of the unintended consequences of that, particularly around practitioner versus, um, self-administration. There, there'd be instances, of course, if, if a person was approved to, uh, have a substance to self-administer, uh, we wouldn't be able to prevent them from taking that substance in a, in a healthcare facility if that was their choosing.
Yep.
They became unwell and decided that that was the time they chose to do that. So there's some practicality issues that will, will always be there and, um, I guess outside of that, there may be, maybe those who don't have any other family, uh, available and would, would, would want to have that in a, in a place where they felt safe. And for, for some people, uh, hospital is a safe place. Uh, so we, I think there's, there's probably just, uh, you know, some wider considerations that would need to be thought through if, if, if there was a limitation on where a person could choose to, to take a substance. Particularly given a lot of the other jurisdictions have made it very clear now, uh, particularly the more recent addition with VAD in those states, that it, that it can be available at any, any sort of institution. There's, there's, uh, it's, it's for the patient's autonomy rather than the conscientious objection.
Dr Burgess, Dr Chin, did you have any questions you want to before I respond? Yeah, absolutely. Can I just respond to that question before you ask the question though, Ollie? I'll just respond to that. I mean, um, for, I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, so feel free to correct me and my colleagues if you want, but, um, we're not looking to, uh, limit that, we're looking to reflect the, um, body of testimony that we've got through, um, submissions. And there's a strong tendency in, not just from laypeople, as I'm saying, but from the heads of all Alice Springs hospitals, for example, to make that prescription, hence the line of questioning. Um, but certainly, um, we want hospitals to be a safe place and we don't want clinical practitioners in the health department to be unduly restricted from doing what they need to do. I pass to my colleague.
Sorry, I've just come late in the game because I'm, I'm trying to work this out. Um, it's actually to do with cross-border and obviously being the Northern Territory, um, and the limitations of our healthcare workers, the vast, um, landscape and the access because of the, um, landscape, more so down the middle and, um, across to the West Australia, South Australia and Queensland, those remote areas. Um, is there a lot of already cross-border sharing with services now? Um, cause I think it did come up, um, briefly. In our, um, hearings in Alice Springs, um, and I'm probably more keen to this as there is already residential requirements in some of the, um, states that already have this. Um, going forward, if we can't, we're still going to have residential requirements, I need to understand if there's going to be limitations and equity access to those people who are having cross-border, uh, medical treatment and things like that.
Uh, that's, thank you, um, Member for Nguru. It's a good question. And I think we, uh, on a day-to-day basis do deal with a lot of cross-border issues, particularly in Central Australia. I think, um, uh, again, going to one of the functions of the appeal board can be, um, if someone identifies or has a strong connection culturally to the Northern Territory and spends some time just over into the WA border, but a lot of the time in Central Australia, that's a very appropriate, um, issue to be canvassed if they're not fulfilling the time residential requirements with the appeal board. So that there are mechanisms in other states where, um, grounds for appeal are significant connections to, for example, the Northern Territory where that can be taken into consideration. So I think really goes to what we're saying is some of these centralised processes that need to be facilitating this journey and not putting up artificial barriers in this case where someone strongly identified with the Northern Territory, although spent time in, um, you know, Western Australian remote community.
I think the question goes to whether we could employ shared services elsewhere rather than having to set ours. I think the question goes to whether we could employ shared services elsewhere rather than having to set ours up. I mean, is it, for example, go ahead, sorry.
So the, what's the name of the specialist, the consulting practitioner?
Yeah, con- consult, yeah.
Yeah, so uh we're considering, um if you had the consulting practitioner as be a specialist in the particular um disease that the person's suffering from. Obviously, we don't have very many of those in the territory and a lot of them come in as locums and then they they fly in, fly out. So are there any uh restrictions around if we uh uh if those specialists from from, say, South Australia, Queensland, W A, if they were certified under the NT regime? Or could there potentially be recognition if they're already certified in a, in another jurisdiction?
Yeah, like, I think um it's a really good question and it's a great one for the legislation um drafting. Because I think you're right, there will be um some uncommon terminal illnesses that we wouldn't have residential specialist uh capacity for opinion. And really what we're talking about is an opinion about the prognosis or length of time left.
Correct.
And and so that that would be something for the legislation uh consideration about ability for us to um get appropriate expert opinion from another jurisdiction where none exists in the Northern Territory.
Gentlemen, I have lots more questions, but we don't have any time. Um, and so we need to wrap up, but I um once again want to thank all of you for making yourselves available to us on short notice and for being so uh forthright in your answers. Um, it has given us uh plenty to think about. Um, we will be working at haste as best we can to reflect as much of the information that we've been able to gather. Um, and we look forward to working in partnership with you going forward to hopefully progress the issue of voluntary assisted dying in the Northern Territory for people in the territory. So thank you very much again for your time.